Mayor.
All members are present.
Thank you. First we have our invocation by John Rains. He's the Communication Director of the Church of Jesus Christ of the Latter-day Saints, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Brown. Could you please stand?
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to meet together as a community with our City Council representatives. And we pray tonight as we meet that the council will be inspired to understand and listen to the needs of the people and that those members of the community here tonight will strive to work together to find solutions to the problems our city faces and that we will find ways to be in harmony with the principles of unity and faith and strive to look out for those that are less fortunate than we are. We pray that we will do our part to revitalize and strengthen each other, that our community will be watched over and protected. We pray for those that serve so faithfully in our armed services and our police force and fire and all the other city officials that strive to strengthen our community and make it a safer and better place to live. And we pray that we will do our parts, that our hearts will be able to listen to the things that we can do individually and collectively to strengthen this great city and to do our part to keep in mind always the great privileges and freedoms that we enjoy. And we pray for the strength of our council and that they will be sustained in going forward and accomplishing the great tasks that are before them. And these things we say in the name of the Savior Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Please remain standing, place your right hand over your heart and join me as we salute our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Attorney, would you like to report out of closed session?
Madam Mayor, we have no items to report out of closed session today.
Okay. Item number 11 is public comment. Anyone who wishes to speak, we ask that they fill out a speaker slip and you'll have three minutes. My timer is working tonight. Mr. Brown here fixed it for me, so we're excited and thankful. So how this works is at one minute, the light will turn yellow. You'll see like a little warning light. And then that means you have one minute left of your three minutes. Don't make me get the hook out. One more thing. I am a passionate person and I know some of you are passionate as well. Please be respectful with your comments of other people. So we will start first with anyone on the teleconference line that would like to speak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If there's anyone who'd like to speak on the teleconference line, you can either raise your hand or unmute yourself now. Right now is the time for public comment. Seeing none there, there's no one on teleconference that wishes to speak.
Okay. Next we'll go to any ecomments that were submitted, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, there are five ecomments. Starting with John Critzer. The Press Enterprise reported Sunday that Joe Males is off to Hemet City Council. Males who stepped down on May 27th so Joe Males can resign. Step down from the council seat that the Superior Court states he never held. On April 28th, 2021, the court ruled the election by which Males assumed the office is annulled and set aside. That ruling was affirmed one month later. The basis for the ruling was that Males was not a resident of District Four when he pulled papers as required. In a Valley News article, May 7th, 2021, quote, "Males admitted he had granted a home in the district but had not yet to move into before filing as a candidate for the open district seat in the court case. How can one be a resident of a place when someone else is occupying it?" The lawsuit draft versus Males included the allegation that Males was not registered to vote in District Four. The judge made no ruling about his voter registration being in District Five. The judge ruled his lack of residency was enough to annul his election. Candidates are required to file campaign disclosure statements. The last report for the November 2020 election was due February 1st, 2021, covering the period 10/17/2020 to 12/31/2020. All Hemet November 2020 candidates filed these reports on time except for Joe Males for City Council 2020 Committee. When Males' report was finally filed almost four months late, it omitted a $10,000 contribution among other sloppy reporting as a 22-year-old resident of District Four concerned that holding office until a November election will effectively deprive our district of representation for nearly a full year. Appointing someone would at least partially make up for the representation loss due to tainted and old election. The logical course of action for the council is to appoint a candidate that followed the rules in 2020 council election. These people showed their willingness to perform civic duty by running for office. End of comment. Next comment is by Sandra Madrid. I'm concerned with a statement made at the meeting on 5/18/21. Ann Smith said, referring to the Hemet Police, "The stuff they shouldn't be doing on our Hemet Police Department is one of the best. I would like to have a clear explanation about this comment and its intent." Thank you. Next is Diane Graff for items 15C and D. I'm a resident of District Four in the City of Hemet. With regards to Joe Males' election annulment, I wish to ask for City Council to not select him as a temporary councilman for our district. It is hard to believe he will have an open mind to the needs for the district. We have seen no evidence of his efforts on our part during this short tenure. His large election donations and legal expense donations from the Fire Department and others will obligate him to these entities. Please consider how this decision will reflect on the Fourth District and our city. Thank you. End of comment. Kenneth Graff, 15C. My name is Kenneth Graff. I've chosen to submit my comments electronically since a Speaker at a recent meeting said he would run over me with his wheelchair if he saw me. I've been a resident of Hemet for over 60 years. For over four years, I served as a Legislative Assistant to Third District Supervisor Jim Venable. For over five years, I was Director of Land Acquisitions and Property Management for the Western Riverside County Habitat Conservation Agency, RCA. Answering to the RCA Board made me of... made up of five county supervisors and elected representatives for 19 cities. In that role, I oversaw the acquisition of over 110 million in habitat purchases. Currently, I serve as Zone Four Flood Control Commissioner for the Third District County Supervisor Chuck Washington, which includes Hemet and San Jacinto. I learned in these roles the importance of elected officials following federal, state, county, and city laws and regulations. While Joe Males has taken large cash contributions from special interests outside of the Fourth District, he has not demonstrated that he understands or is willing to follow the rules and guidelines required of an elected. I therefore do not feel he should be appointed to fill a vacancy on the Hemet City Council until time as he demonstrates his understanding of the rules, of his trustworthiness and ability to follow those rules that apply to elected offices. Ken Graff, Hemet Fourth District Resident. End of comment. Last and final comment. Ian Davidson. Agenda item subject Joe Males. I do not agree to you appointing Joe Males. I request you consider other candidates who abide by rules, who were residents of District Four when applications were filed. If you abide by court rulings, you should not appoint Joe Males. End of ecomments.
What was his name again?
Ian Davidson.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Next we have in-person comments. First we'll start with Gail Wesson, followed by Eddie George. You'll each have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Gail Wesson. I'm also talking about the same item. I've been a resident of the city for more than 40 years. I live in District Five, but how District Four seat is filled affects all residents. This isn't about Joe Males as a veteran, a community volunteer, a parent, a grandparent. It is about the rule of law, a civil lawsuit, and a judge's ruling that annulled the District Four November 2020 election results because the candidate who won was not qualified to seek the seat at the time of the filing process. I request that the city take action to post the text of the judge's ruling or judgment so that everyone can read what was said and what was written. This case was not about a stupid technicality. The city needs an estimate of election costs. Maybe the city clerk has that information. It wasn't in the agenda as posted. The city needs that information so that the council can look at the various options available to fill the vacant seat. That information may be available at this point. If not, it looks like there is plenty of time to continue this item until the next meeting and either fill it by appointment or if necessary, there's time to call an election in November. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next we have Eddie George, followed by Jesse Coram.
Hey, I'm Eddie George. I'm the one that actually runs the Hemet Eye News out here on hemetynews.com. And you know, we've been following this for a while. And you know, I see there's more corruption in the city than you guys think there is. And it's not who we got on the council. It's the people that's wanting to get their people on the council. And everybody in this room, I know, voted for Joe Males. We all backed Joe Males. And you know, they're talking about if he's qualified for this job. I mean, how many of you guys think this guy's not qualified for this job? This guy has done so much for the city, but yet he hasn't been able to do much for the city because of this binarchy that's wanting to go on and get him out before the guy can even do his job, you know? And the guy did what he had to do. He went by the city website. He followed the rules on the website. I mean, it was black and white. Does it really matter when you go to pick up your paperwork? It should be when you matter when you put your name on that dotted line when you applied for this position. And he was living in that home when he filled that paperwork out. And now we're gonna what? Everybody's complaining about this city is already going broke. You know, where's all the city money? You know, we need more money for the city, but yet now everybody just wants to postpone this 15C so that, you know, we can just push this and push this and push this. We don't need to prolong this. We need to do it tonight, folks. We need the City Council to make the decision to let's get Joe back in. I mean, we need Joe. The city needs Joe. And you know, it's coming down to the votes on our City Council. I know Linda Krupa, I appreciate what you do on your term. I know this is your last term, so it really don't matter to you what happens and what decisions, but this is really, you know, we depending on Russ Brown. You know, you've got another election coming. You've got another term, I believe, coming. And this is gonna really show if you're for the people or are you for the other people? And we judge, you know, or not judge, but we actually voted everybody in. We figured you guys would be the best people for our seats. The people voted you guys. We need you to do the right thing, especially you, Mr. Brown. We need your proper consideration on what to do on this. I mean, we need your vote for the people and not for the power of the people, if you know what I mean. And those power of the people is the ones that's got the money in their pockets, that ones that are corrupted people. Carly Meyer could never get her job done. Everybody said, well, while we have Carly Meyer in office, you know, why couldn't she never get anything done? Why? Think about it. Three to two. Carly always got shut down. Carly's decisions could never be made. Well, now Carly's got a team that's actually standing for the people, folks. And what are we gonna do? Are we gonna let them just take them off? Are we gonna let them take Joe Males out of our seat? Well, it's happening, but now it's up to the right people to make the right decisions. All we're gonna do is prolong this 15C, put it in another meeting, put it in another agenda. Nothing's never gonna get done. What we're gonna do? Waste the city's money. What is it running, like $100,000 to do another election, a special election? Is that the kind of money we want to see our city spend that we could be using it for something else?
Thank you.
We could fix this situation by making the right vote. Russ Brown making the right decision. And I want to appreciate it. That's all I got to say. If I got any minutes left, you give it to somebody else.
Jesse Coram, followed by Michael Wolford.
Good evening. My name is Jesse Coram. I'm the Senior Pastor at Living Way right up the street here on Latham. I heard a couple of comments, you know, read. I heard some people talking, you know, and you know, saying that they haven't seen Joe do anything. You know, I'm an eyewitness to a man that's come out, picked up dirty needles, picked up dirty underwear, picked up dirty socks, spoke to people that are in the street that can really use help. And not only am I the only witness, Carly, you're a witness, Malcolm, you're a witness. You guys participated and were out there as we were out there ministering in the street. Now, I know there's this technicality, but I mean, let's be real. Who hasn't made a mistake? You know, I'm reminded of the verse that Jesus says, hey, to him who shows no mercy, mercy will not be shown to him. This is something, you say it's a common mistake. We all make mistakes. You know, if I can share just briefly and I won't keep you long, you know, I have excellent credit. Couple of months ago, I got so busy in life, I got so tied up with my kids and my grandkids and with people at the church, I was one day late for the first time on one of my bills ever. It was a mistake. It wasn't like I neglected it. It just happened. And I'm here to say, you know what? For the people that voted the majority, 57% if I'm correct for Joe, I'm here to represent the people. He was voted in. He made a mistake, if that's what you want to call it. I don't know all the details, but hey, who hasn't? Jesus says, when they brought this woman, he committed adultery. And they said, this woman, the law says that she should be stoned. He said, he who has no sin, let him throw the first stone. I don't think none of us here can throw a stone. I'm done.
Mike Wolford, followed by Tom Elvis.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mike Wolford. I own a business in Hemet. I live in Hemet. I sit on the boards of a few veteran organizations in Hemet. We know that Joe is a grassroots man. He's down with the people, getting dirty in the trenches. We know the right thing to do, so let's just do the right thing. I can say everything that everybody else said. Everybody's gonna say the same thing. Just do the right thing. Let's bring Joe back. Let's put him back on the streets where he belongs, down in the grassroots, helping the people. You know, we're gonna have a special election. We're gonna spend a bunch of money and we're gonna get it done anyway because all these people in this room are gonna go to bat. We're all gonna hit the streets. We're gonna hit door to door. We're gonna hit parking lots. We're gonna get everybody involved and we're gonna win again. So I'm sure I got a lot of time left. If anybody wants to really rant, you can have the rest of my time, but God bless Joe Males for what he's been and what he's done. And I don't know, all these people who wrote in, who wrote in, they're not here. Why aren't they not here? Because Julian was gonna run him over with a wheelchair? That's just BS. They're not here because they don't want to show their faces. That's right. So let's just do the right thing. We're gonna get it done anyway, so just do it now.
Thank you. We have Tom Elvis, followed by Stacy Olson.
My name's Tom Elvis. Resident District Four. And I had a lot of questions for what's going on with this whole thing. I feel the integrity of the election has been broken here. I'm sure Joe's a great guy. I personally don't know him. But I think we do need to hold another election, to be honest with you. I'm sure it's gonna be at a cost, but I mean, I see people that everything going through our presidential election and the people feel the integrity is gone there too. I mean, let's do this right. Well, let me tell you about that. He didn't fill out a form he was supposed to fill out.
Don't comment when he's... Don't interrupt, please.
Anyway, that's my opinion and I'm sure it's one of very few in this room, but have a great day.
Stacy Olson, followed by Janine Harley.
Mayor, Council. We're gonna worry about a small technicality of where someone lived or didn't live because he was misled. Rather than looking at all of the hard work, sweat, effort that he has put in, what are we more concerned about? Where he lived or what he's doing for the city and for the citizens in it? I'm frustrated, but I'm confident as I speak to you tonight. We shouldn't even be here tonight, even having this conversation, but because of a handful of people that spoke earlier that were afraid to come in, here we are. The overwhelming majority of citizens let their voices and choice be known at the polls. 57% of citizens spoke, "We want Joe Males." Their voices should outweigh those of a handful. For many years, outside influences have had their hand in our politics and ultimately the stagnant negative results our city has endured. Our city continues to struggle because of their influence. But today, you four have the power to take back the city and honor the overwhelming majority of citizens who voted for Joe Males. Today, you four have the power in your hands to stand for Hemet, to stand for the citizens of Hemet, and to honor their 3,605 votes for Joe Males. To vote no on keeping Joe Males, whose short council record has been progressive and impressive, to say the least, would indicate a clear allegiance to those few select voices whose record clearly shows a lack of interest in turning Hemet around for the good of all citizens. I believe that each of you desires to see Hemet great again. I believe that each of you would love to be remembered for turning Hemet around. I'm sure that each of you desires, when your term is over, to be able to speak about the turning point that you were a part of, that forever changed the face and reputation of Hemet. I am confident that your allegiance is to the citizens of Hemet. And I pray that you will step up, stand courageous, and honor the voices of 3,605 residents that clearly said, "We want Joe." Thank you.
Janine Harley, followed by Terry Larnett.
Hi, my name is Janine Harley. I'm a member of a citizen here of Hemet. I'm from San Diego originally, born and raised all my life. And I have a few choice words, but they're not bad, so don't worry. The first one is vote. I've never missed a vote since I was 18 years old. It's what was instilled in me. It's what I do. The other one is hate. I hate politics with a passion because it's so confusing. And so I don't tend to get involved like this. But another choice word is love. I love this city. Love it. It works for me and I work for it. It's difficult to find a team that works in unity together like a well-oiled machine. And I think it hasn't happened here for a long, long time. And last year, I just, from listening to somebody else that I trust talk about Carly, I started paying attention. And now she's our mayor. That happens for a reason. And I believe that movement forward is so incredibly necessary. But what... So again, I hate politics with a passion. The last council meeting that I went to, people got up and spoke and there was a gentleman that came, excuse me if I don't use the proper terms, Mexican-American gentleman who brought his little girl. And I can look around and see a lot of people, a lot of silver-haired people, this is their community, they've been here a long time, but it's really easy to point the finger, you know, and sit and not be of action. And this gentleman came and he shared with his little girl about Joe. So then that caught my attention because if we, if somebody can sit in a living room with one of us and grab his attention and grab his passion to bring his child along to talk, this man works, you know? He's raising a family. I mean, this stuff takes time and energy. And I was so... So that made me passionate for Joe. So I did my research and I watched and I read up on him. And so I'm here because this team needs to include Joe because the sixth letter word that means everything is action. Actions speak louder than words. And I don't know about money and all this, you know, I just hate politics, but I'm living up to the people who can do it. Carly can do it. I had a boss once, oh gosh, technical answer, let me do it real quick. I had a boss once who told me shit rolls downhill. Right? And but the truth is also good rolls downhill. So if you've got somebody good working for our community, that rolls downhill. And so then you see our panel that comes around and again, don't know politics, but I don't know the name, but Joe is a part of it. That's it.
Thank you. Next, Terry Larnett, followed by Javier Vasquez Jr.
Hello. Real quick, I just wanted to talk about, we have a Bluegrass Gospel Jam that's coming up on Sunday evenings, it's starting this Sunday. It starts at 7:00, 7 to 9:00. Everybody is invited and the public is welcome. So if you want to do some Bluegrass yourself with Bluegrass Gospel, you can go ahead and there's a phone number. I've got flyers to pass out if anybody's interested. Secondly, I want to talk about, I live in Hemet. I've been here since about 2010. Now, I've got an isolated place with horses and fat dogs and chickens. I got all these chickens out there and every morning they lay eggs. And so I get to have eggs every morning for breakfast and I'm looking down at my breakfast and I'm looking at these eggs and our chickens, they got involved enough by breakfast to give me those eggs. And that's what involvement is. You have to be involved in order to do that. Now, I look at my bacon. There was a pig out there that got committed to my breakfast. And he committed himself so that I could enjoy that breakfast. I look at Joe and he is also committed to this city. He gives everything to this city. I look at the council members here and I know Carly, she does the same. She's out there and she gives her all for this city. And that's what we need. We need more people like us to get involved, but they're the ones that do the commitment. They're the ones that submit their time and energy for this city. Joe didn't know that he was supposed to live in that district to become eligible. He looked at the website and the website still today, still says that. All you have to do is just be a citizen of Hemet. Joe's not a politician, so he went by what the website said. He was deceived, misled, I guess that's better. He was misled by the city website. And I told him, told you guys earlier, you should change that website so we don't have this happening again. Somebody that comes up and doesn't know what's going on, not a politician like Joe, and get it corrected. Anyway, that's what I gotta say. We gotta do the right thing tonight, keep Joe.
Javier Vasquez Jr., followed by Joseph Rhodes.
The only reason I'm even here, because my legs killing me. I'm like a lady. I'm not really versed in console and help the guy try to get elected. The politics were cutthroat. Wow, I'm from Abadillo. I thought we were bad. But what I would like to say is this. Pulse 53 was having, which I belong to, was having a hard time. Nothing getting done. One is going this way, that way, arguing between the members. Excuse me if I get a little emotional. Not this tough guy I used to think I was, but then that guy, he steps in, gets things rolling. We're gonna help the homeless, we're gonna help homeless feds, we're gonna clean up the city. Góng ho, vato. You know what I mean? Marine from the heart. And I'm a... And I'm a Ranger, and I don't get along with too many people. But a guy like that, 'cause of this town, like that one dude said, picking up needles, cleaning. I was there. He told me, Louis, I want you to write down all cars that show up for the cleanup. Hundred and seventy. That don't sound like a lot, but a hundred and seventy cars is a lot of cars. Then he had me get the map together. Ain't much of a map, it's just of Hemet. All the districts. And that's what he wants to do, start here. Because he said, this is what he told all the people cleaning up. We have to start somewhere. This place is falling apart, and there's no reason for it. Not when you guys, because I don't care about your politics. You're either my friend, or not. Hey, man, this city's big, go where you want to go. But you have the right for your children, our children, to live in a clean city. That's our right. And when somebody like him comes in, and he's one of them Marine dudes, you know? It's always samperfee and that other word they use, that hey, let's get busy. Well, as a Ranger, we follow them. That's why there's a lot of us here today. Because it's not easy to follow people. Most people are bullshit, you know? But when you see him, the first guy out there, handing out food for the homeless. But another good thing about him is he brings people together. Oh, why should one organization in this town do a little bit of work here, fighting with another? The Alps fed us after we did that. The city council was involved with Joe. Cindy Lecky was there picking up trash. What Joe does is he unifies, okay? Now, after I talk, I'm gone. I'll probably tip over in front of you before I even leave. But I had to come because it's up to you guys. And we know what politics is, we see it. We see what they did to our capital. And I don't care what political persuasion you are. You do not treat our side like that. You do not treat our people like that. And this is a small microcosm of that, of everybody not getting along. But when an individual can come in and unify the people, and not only talk about getting stuff, like that guy said, get it done. Picking up trash, feeding people, working extra hours to make sure people get presents for Christmas. Come on, man. Okay? Oh, my time, yeah, I'm so sorry. Just, I'll just say one more thing. I've seen this a couple of times, times now. And even though we're all kind of religious people, man, if you remember this, what a person does in their lifetime echoes for eternity. Remember that. That means what you do today is how people will view you tomorrow. And when you have a person like him, and they're gonna boot him out for whatever, I don't get involved in all that. But when they say he hasn't did anything, oh no. In that short period of time, he did more than people I've seen in the council or organizations. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Joseph Rhodes, followed by Julian Perez.
I got my stick, man. Hey, I'm Joseph, Joseph Rhodes. Most people know me from living way of Hemet. And, you know, first I need to, you know, I never mean any disrespect to any of you guys because you guys are all pretty good people. But, you know, I've heard so much about what the press enterprise. If that stuff was like Charmin, I wouldn't use it, you know? Because it's garbage, you know? And not only that, gentlemen, I don't even know who you are, sir. But I'm gonna tell you something. Don't buy into something that you're not real certain of. Because, you see, I was on the city website.
About you, Mr. Rhodes, you addressed the council.
Oh, okay. So I was on the city website, and I looked. I looked at all the forms that needed to be filed. 501, the 460, the, hold on, I gotta get my glasses on. All right, so, 501 was filed on 8/10/2020. His papers, those papers was pulled on 7/20/2020. His papers were filed on 4/10. The signatures qualified on 8/10. He pulled the 700 to 497 several times there, the 460 and the 501. The reason why I'm just bringing this up is that it really bothers me, first off, if anybody just tells a blatant BS story, and then they want everybody to believe it. They put it on social media, Facebook, Twitter, whatever. All that stuff is just, to me, is just stupid. But the people are, they're coming to you. I've been coming here, I don't know how long now, I've been to a few of your meetings here. And every time, the people keep telling you the same thing. How many times would your child tell you he's hungry before you get up and feed it? You need to listen to what the people are saying. You were elected by the people. And these people are coming. Kenneth Graff and a few others that made their comments, don't show up. They don't show up, they just throw it out here on the internet. And that kind of stuff is just, it's crazy. If you got a voice, speak up. Come, put the time in like everybody else is liberating. Guys, you guys are doing a great job. Keep doing the right things, listen to what all these people are saying. Because I know it was on your agenda tonight for the vacancy, but tonight's a great night to vote for him and put him back on the seat, even if it is temporarily until we have a runoff election. Because two to two, or whatever, you know, if you're all on one side, or whatever, then it works out great. But if not, then it's not working good for the people. Is there a red light for me to stop talking? Thank you very much, I appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Julian Perez, followed by Jacob Dean-Surfer.
All right. This is Mr. Kenneth Graff. I'm gonna apologize to him for him thinking that I'm gonna really run him over. I mean, it's ridiculous, but that's okay, though. He should be here. They shouldn't be talking on the internet. They should get their butts down here, just like I do. Hey, I'm handicapped. I know that. I got one leg. I'm standing up right now for a reason. God told us that we have to have faith in ourselves and our fellow people. Am I right, Pastor? All right. My thing is, is I don't know how much you guys know, but I'm gonna let you know sometime. Joe has a lot of faith in this inner circle that's here today. And I'm asking you to have the same faith in that man as he has in you. He believes in you guys. Isn't that what faith is about, belief? And I know for a fact, I talked to my brother. My brother's been a member of the Hemet town here for 72 years. And he told me to tell you guys one thing. You better believe that he don't really speak ever against all this, but he will fight and help us bring Joe back in if we have to have an election. You guys have already saved money, if I'm not lying. You saved money already as a group, as a team, because you believe in each other. And Russ, I'll tell you one thing, as a Legionnaire, and I might be out of line for saying this, but I know that when we were in the military, we were taught to have each other's back. And I'm asking you, Russ, as a friend, because you are my friend, and you're my fellow Legionnaire, make the right vote, my friend. I really, I really bring this to you, you know? Another thing, too, you know, my other two compadres, they're not here today. But that's okay, because I'm gonna represent them too, Willie and Johnny. We're the only team, there's only three of us between San Jacinto and Hemet. That we represent you guys. We'll be going to New York to represent Hemet. But if I don't feel like Hemet deserves to be represented, then I'll just represent myself. And that's what I'm just trying to tell you guys. I love Hemet to death. And I would do anything to make Hemet better. When I, I have tears when I go by certain parts because I don't see kids playing there. But we're gonna make it better through the help of everybody, through you guys. So believe in him, and he's gonna believe in you. And remember, man, that's the one thing about it is, it's time for us to bring God-fearing people back to the United States. That's all I want to say, thank you.
Next, we have Jacob Dean-Surfer, followed by Pat Gregory.
My name is Jacob, and we're all, we're all here for one thing, and that's Joe for tonight. And I've had the privilege of meeting Joe. And he's done a lot for this community in the short time that he was given. Trash, homeless, veterans, and so on. The people voted for Joe, and it's clear. I'm reaching out to the council to take in consideration what the people want. Take a good look around what the city has become over all these years. It's time for change, and it starts with you. Let Joe finish what he started. Thank you.
Pat Gregory, followed by Mary Ann Darwin.
Good evening, council members. First of all, my name is Pat Gregory, and I am not afraid to voice my opinion in person. I respectfully request that all members of this council appoint Joe Males to fill the vacancy in District Four. Joe Males won the election by a substantial amount of votes. The voters of District Four have decided a minor and insignificant technicality should not give the loser, Mr. Madrid, a second chance. Mr. Graff has gone to a lot of trouble and expense to try and overturn a decision of the voters. I'd like to respond to Mr. Graff's letter that was read at the last council meeting. Mr. Graff is determined to challenge the integrity of an election. Yet, when Bonnie Wright, prior to-time mayor and long-term council member physically moved out of her district, she came back inappropriately and voted on a contested budget. Where was Mr. Graff? Also, where was Mr. Graff when his wife and other members of the First Measure U Committee failed to demand an audit of the Measure U funds as they were obligated to do so? No, Mrs. Graff was not reappointed to the Measure U Committee. People need to learn to lose gracefully. The hypocrisy of Mr. Graff should point out that some members of this community are more concerned with their own agendas than with what is right for Hemet. The people have voted for Joe Males. Nonwithstanding Mr. Graff's attempts to circumvent the will of the people, the council, all council members, should appoint Joe Males. Hemet needs Joe. Thank you.
Our last speaker tonight is Mary Ann Darwin.
Thank you for making me last. All right, so I'm up here to talk some trash. Actually, literally, trash. So I'm kind of changing it up a little bit. I have been going around the city, and we don't have a lot of, a lot of people talk about how much trash we have out there, and we have to pick up trash. But there are no trash cans. Why can you go to other cities and see trash cans out in front of restaurants, out in front of stores? Our trash cans seem to be at all the bus stops, all the, you know, some city buildings, we have trash cans. But we really don't have any trash cans where you can just walk up and throw something away. There has been a study done that people won't walk 17 feet, any more than 17 feet, to throw something away. And when you see trash, that creates more trash. So that's why they did put lids on trash cans. That way, people will walk up and put trash in a can. So my suggestion is, is that we have restaurants. You know what? They already paid for trash to be picked up. We should be able to put a trash can out in front of their restaurant or store. They're already paying the bill. So what is it for them to just come around and pick up the trash? That's gonna take a lot of trash off our streets. I know I'm a big visionary, and I see it, and I believe it. But I really do think that if we would take the time and to go out, and we could even put advertisements on those trash cans. I mean, you know, people could put their businesses on there. And that would then help everybody. I have a gentleman that works out of San Jacinto, and he is, it's called Executive Images, and he's landscaping and maintenance. And what he does is, it's a five-guy crew, and he has three trucks, and it's just him. And he actually will hire guys that, you know, have a shady past. But he said, everybody has a past. And, you know, why not give them a chance? And I see them at the Senior Center in San Jacinto every Tuesday. And I mean, they show up, and they clean the, they clean up all the trash that gets left by the homeless. And they were homeless at one point. And they are just thankful to have a job. And I think that we should really consider this gentleman to come into Hemet. Because he also, on his own time, does go around to the parks. And if the homeless do pick up their own trash, he'll go around and put the bags in his truck and take it to the dump for them. And reward them for doing it. So I really think that we are moving ahead. There is a great opportunity for this, and I would love to see it happen. Because I know, in my past, that I had a trash can every 17 feet. And when I left that job, it irritated me when I couldn't turn around and throw something in the trash. It really does. But anyway, thank you, and have a nice evening.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the public hearing. Tonight, for our public hearing, 12A, Consider Calling a Special Election, Declaring the Results of the Election and Approving Formation and Levy of Special Taxes for the City of Hemet's Community Facility District Number 2021-01, generally located between Warren Road, Fisher Street, Mustang Way, and Poplar Street. Now, the recommendation from staff is to continue this hearing to June 22, 2021. Are there any comments from council? Okay, so we will continue this item to June 22. Next, item 12B is also a public hearing item. This is for the Confirmation of Special Assessment Against Parcels of Land Within the City of Hemet for Costs of Abatement and Removal of Weeds, Rubbish, and Refuge. This, too, is recommended to be continued for public hearing on June 22, 2021. Any comments from council?
A question. Is this to allow for the actual abatement to be done or for the letters to be prepared to send out?
There were some items on the fire department side that needed to be cleared up, so that's why we're asking for this to be continued.
Okay, thank you.
All right, with that, we will go ahead and continue that item also. Item number 13, Miseven File. We have the City of Hemet Warrant Register report that was submitted. I trust everyone was able to go through this item. If there are no comments, we will receive and file the warrant register. Any comments, council? All right. Item number 14 is our Consent Calendar. All items on the consent calendar will be acted upon with the single action of the city council, unless otherwise requested, to be pulled and discussed. Are there any council members that would like to pull an item for separate consideration? That's 14D. All right, item 14D. Are there any other items? All right, so if someone wants to make a motion for A, B, C, and E?
I'll make a motion to approve the items minus the one that was pulled by Commander. I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Can we have a roll call vote?
Motion by Councilmember Llentol, second by Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouppa? Councilmember Llentol? Mayor Meyer?
Yes.
That motion passes 4-0 to pass the consent calendar items with the removal of item 14D.
Okay. Councilmember Crouppa, item 14D. Yes, on this general plan amendment.
On, on this general plan amendment. I just want to thank staff and the Planning Commission and Ranto Diamante for the increased conversation that was had not, had not only at the Planning Commission, but also in the meeting that was facilitated to answer more specific questions. And I do appreciate it. I think this will be a good development. It's not necessarily coming out the way that we may want as a city, but it is according to agreements that were made quite a long time ago. But on that, I would just urge planning staff to, in the future, that when continuations and extensions are asked for on specific plans, especially of this size, that we look real carefully at traffic circulation and everything that has changed from the time the original specific plan was approved to what it actually is in reality today. Because while a four-lane, and I still have an issue with Warren Road, as you can tell, I think the increased traffic that we have in this valley is only going to get worse. And I think we'd be better off with a six-lane divided road out there instead of a two-lane undivided road. But based on prior agreements, I will move approval.
Excellent. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Crouppa, second by Councilmember Lilenthal. Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouppa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lilenthal?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes.
That motion passes 4-0 to pass the item.
Excellent. All right, on to item number 15, Discussion Action Items. First, we have 15A, Nobel Coronavirus Emergency Declaration Update.
Thank you, Mayor. So council, this item was requested to be updated every single council meeting. As you can see, the governor did have a plan, I think it's still in effect, reopen California. We are following the guidance that has been issued by Cal OSHA. I understand that there will be another hearing scheduled for tomorrow. Based on the information within the Cal OSHA requirements, it will require some additional work and additional items imposed on the City of Hemet with respect to our employees. So we are continuing to track that and working with the JPIA to make sure that we are in compliance and making sure that our employees do stay safe. So I think that's the most notable update. Mayor, happy to answer any questions. Did council have any?
I have a question for you. Who is tracking the constant changes to their changes and their lack of organization? And are we allowing their dysfunction to affect us? Because if we jump every time they jump, then we will be doing a lot of work that will end up being in vain.
So as it stands, our current COVID protocols plan did not have to be changed. So the practices that we are adhering to have not been changed. The practices that we've employed over the last year are the same that we continue to do. So up until the lead-up of the governor's reopening, we have had to wait until these new guidance plans are issued. Once they are issued and are finalized, then we start making the changes. But we don't do any changes up until, or we don't make any changes, changes until everything has been finalized. So up until this point, we haven't had to make any changes. We will wait until the final guidance is received, and we will go ahead and implement work with the JPIA to make sure that we are covered on that side. So nothing as of yet.
And then as far as June 15th?
There's some.
What is our mask status going to be?
It appears, based on the Cal OSHA guidance that does impact employers, there are requirements that are going to be continually imposed on employees within the state of California. So we do have to adhere to those guidances. It does appear that they seem to conflict with federal guidance, and so my hope is that there's additional clarity provided at subsequent hearings, but I believe all of our guesses are just as good as everyone else's when it comes to what the state of California will do on a go-forward basis.
And if you need council clarity, definitely just ask.
Thank you, Mayor.
Are there any other questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Not necessarily a question, I guess, just commentary. It was, there was an interesting editorial in the Press Enterprise today that really caught my attention, and it talked about the governor moving the goalposts again. And I think the comment was, they moved the goalposts off the field and maybe up into the stand somewhere. I'm not really sure what the target is anymore. And I just wish that there, maybe through the, through Cal cities, we can have a bigger voice, but I think the cities really need to start speaking up with a unified voice to say, this, this is not sustainable in the direction. When you have CDC saying, the things that they're saying about the necessity of wearing masks, and pros and cons, and all about the vaccination efforts and the dwindling number of cases. This whole thing started, the state declaration of an emergency. The basic, and I'm going to paraphrase, but basically, when the state declares a state of emergency, it has to do so relative to the incident, whatever it is, being at the level that existing resources cannot reasonably address the issue and, and successfully mitigate it. And that was certainly the case in the onset of, of the pandemic, because there was a concern about a lack of bed space, a lack of apparatus, a lack of PPE for the medical staff. And all those things, I think we could all wrap our heads around the necessity of declaring the emergency. But as we see continuing reports about the diminishing numbers and the fact that we've even heard recently from our own Hemet hospital, that they had zero COVID patients in the hospital facility. So it sounds to me like we are getting to the point where the justification for a state declaration of emergency doesn't exist anymore. And, and I think that maybe, I think maybe the, the cities, if we could somehow be the catalyst and appeal through Cal cities, Linda, you have a lot more experience with Cal cities than I do, but I just think it, it might be something that could snowball, and maybe we could get a bigger voice. I really kind of thought that June 15th was going to be a magical date, that, and maybe it was his last-ditch effort to save himself from a recall, I'm not really sure. But it's not materializing, I think, the way I envisioned and hoped that it would. So I would certainly support anything that we could do as a city to generate, if nothing else, than just a letter saying our displeasure with this and the, and the difficulties that it represents to us as, as a city organization and to our constituents in, in the city. So, that's my editorial, I guess.
That's a good editorial. If, if council, I don't know legalities, getting that letter ready before Monday. I do have Riverside Division Executive Committee meeting Monday at 5:00. And if I could take a letter from the city and then urge all of the cities in Riverside County to send a similar letter to Cal cities, and maybe even to the governor, and just say, enough is enough.
Is that a motion?
This is an action item.
Yep, that's.
All second-class.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote?
Motion by Councilmember Crouppa, second by Mayor Meyer. Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouppa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lilenthal?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes.
That motion passes 4-0 to provide direction to staff to send a letter of opposition.
Yes. A letter of demanding our freedoms back. I will be free, no matter what, but for those of you who want to wear one, then that's all good. But I like to breathe there. So, okay, item number 15B, Council Discussion and Direction to Staff for California JPIA Property Program Participation.
So Mayor, as Lauren is making her way to the podium, you'll recall that a few months ago, we did discuss a couple of these options. We're providing this overview tonight, so that if the council provides direction, we can include it. And there is a cost, we can include it in the upcoming fiscal year '21, '22 budget. So that's why we've aligned it tonight, so that if there is direction provided, we can include it in the budget.
Good evening, Mayor. Council, if you'll just give me a moment, Todd's going to help me get my presentation I, I bring forward to you discussion for the optional property program participation that we had discussed on March 23rd. So on March 23rd, council approved participation in the All Risk Property Program with the California JPIA, but there were several optional coverages that council asked for more direction on. So the following programs are optional and provide additional coverages. The first one is the emergency vehicles. Emergency vehicles only covers fire and ambulance vehicles. In the City of Hemet's case, we do not have ambulances, therefore, it would only cover fire vehicles. The Other Vehicles Program would cover police and any other vehicles, whether it be Public Works, or any other pool cars or anything that the city may have. The third program is Mechanical Breakdown, and we have earthquake and flood and pollution. So for emergency vehicles, again, only covers fire and ambulance, and it includes radio and telephone equipment within the vehicle. Now, keep in mind, on all of these, you're only, these additional coverages are only for the physical damage to the vehicle and not for any liability associated with it. But any liability associated with it is covered through the liability insurance that we already participate in. The deductible for this program is $10,000 per occurrence, and that is comprehensive and collision. And I did ask our representative at CJPIA, because it has this additional deductible of $2,500 per occurrence for radio and telephone equipment, but as clarification, he said, fire and ambulance vehicles are subject to a $10,000 per occurrence deductible. Personal property attached to or inside the vehicle, such as medical equipment or tools, fall under the same deductible. For example, if an ambulance is involved in an accident resulting in damage to the vehicle itself, as well as equipment inside the vehicle, the city would only pay the $10,000 deductible. We would not be required to pay the additional $2,500. The annual cost for this program is $11,000. A fire truck, a fire engine, if I'm not mistaken, is, costs upwards of $500,000. Of course, they do take the fair market value of the vehicle at the time of the accident, but $11,000 is significantly lower than what it would cost to replace a fire engine. Under the Other Vehicle Programs, all other vehicles, including police vehicles and the equipment, radio and telephone within the vehicle are covered. This also would cover, again, our Public Works vehicles. And just like the other one, this is only for physical damage, not for liability associated with the vehicle. On this one, the deductible is only $2,500 per occurrence for comprehensive and collision. And this one is, says, "Radio and telephone equipment are considered to be part of the vehicle, but other personal property attached to or inside the vehicle is not. For example, if a police cruiser is involved in an accident resulting in damage to the vehicle itself, as well as radio and telephone equipment and other equipment inside the vehicle, two deductibles apply." So in this case, we would consider if there's damage to a laptop that's in there, or any other sort of police equipment that an officer would have in the vehicle. Same thing with Public Works, if they were to have an accident, any tools or, you know, a lot of times, we, they, we purchase vehicles and then have to alter them to, to be able to service whatever it is they're servicing. So that would be a separate deductible. Police vehicles, just to give you an idea, can cost anywhere from $30,000 to $50,000 to replace and to fully outfit. Other city vehicles, such as Public Works trucks, can cost anywhere from $30,000 to $87,000, and that's only for trucks up to one and a half tons. Anything in excess of that would be significantly more. The annual cost of this program is $53,200. So one police vehicle loss would cover the cost of the program. For the Mechanical Breakdown Program, this covers physical damage for sudden and accidental breakdown of boiler and machinery and electrical injury. Some examples of the equipment that's covered are boilers and pressure vessels, machinery, mechanical equipment, such as compressors, pumps, and blowers. The city does own some compressors. And under machinery and electrical equipment, we have motors, generators, switchboards, and transformers. City does own several generators. The annual cost of this program is $3,000. For the Pollution Program, this covers first and third-party damages, including certain types of cleanups, non-owned disposal sites, and above-ground and underground storage tanks. Equipment, examples of equipment, oh, I'm sorry, that came over from the other side. The city does own above-ground and underground storage tanks for fuel, because we do have, I think, three fueling stations within the city. The annual program cost for this one is $10,960. Earthquake and flood coverage covers physical damage to real or personal property from earthquake shock or flood perils. The deductibles for flood is $100,000 per occurrence, or $250,000 per occurrence, if the property is located wholly or partially within a special flood area as defined by FEMA. And for earthquake coverage, it's 5% per unit of insurance, subject to a minimum $100,000 deductible per occurrence. The annual cost of this program is $179,000. In addition, council had some questions on March 23rd, when these programs were brought forward. I did reach out to JPIA and received some information on it. And so one of the questions asked was, what programs do other cities of similar size participate in? The answer to that was, most member agencies, regardless of size, participate in the All Risk Program, emergency vehicles, if they have them, other vehicles, and mechanical breakdown programs. As for pollution programs, some member agencies participate in the program and some do not. The two most important decision criteria are exposure and experience. Exposure, experience, and cost. Agencies that have pollution exposures and/or a history of pollution losses, along with the ability to afford coverage, usually participate. The second question was, what is path lost experience for cities of similar size or with similar services? Mechanical breakdown losses are rare, but do happen. For example, one city of a similar size to Hemet had a backup generator and one of their water pump stations break down. The loss was covered through the program. Pollution losses are a bit more prevalent, but Pollution losses are a bit more prevalent, but can occur to agencies of any size. For example, a third party dumping chemicals into a storm drain of a small member agency. The pollution program pays for the cleanup. It is important to keep in mind with the pollution program, though, that it does have a $250,000 deductible before they begin to cover anything. The city normally participates in the All Risk Program, and this is included already in the fiscal year 21, '22 preliminary budget, so it's already been accounted for. The council directs staff to enroll in any of the optional programs. Any annual costs will need to be added to the fiscal year 21, '22 budget. Council may also opt not to participate in any of the optional programs. And with that, I am available to answer any questions and receive direction. All right, council, do we have any questions? Comments? Go ahead.
Brian, thank you for the report, and a couple of questions. One, going back to the coverage on, on generators and, and those types of equipment, where would our, our wells fall into that, and the pumps and the related equipment at those well sites?
So I didn't get into the specifics of that with our representative, but, and essentially, all of the documentation that he sent me states that if the items are listed within, so they came out and did an audit of all city assets and, you know, buildings and whatnot. So if it's listed in there, and I would assume that the wells are listed in there, I can get back to you on that, I would think that the pumps would be included in that.
Yeah, I just think it's important that we make sure that we cover all of our infrastructure that, that, because if it's mechanical, it can fail. And, and I think it's important that we make sure we have an all-inclusive list.
Right. And I do know that we do have compressors, and they recently came out to check them to make sure, because on March 23rd, council directed staff to participate in All Risk and in the two vehicle programs, the fire and the other, or the emergency and the other vehicle. And so when I contacted them to let them know after the fact, they, they called to let me know that the JPIA had chosen to give the city the mechanical breakdown coverage and no additional cost through June 30th. So this is starting July 1st, and they did come out and do an inspection of the compressors that we have. We also have generators. We have a very big generator that we rely on at City Hall, and we have them at other facilities to keep us running when power goes down.
Right. On the, and just to make sure I'm clear, using the police vehicle as an example, if it's in a collision, you've got $2,500 deductible on the vehicle damage, then that would basically cover any of the damage to the vehicle if it wasn't equipped as a police vehicle, like, like a private citizen's vehicle. And then another $2,500 deductible for any of the emergency equipment that we put into the vehicle, if that's damaged.
For any emergency equipment, not including radio or telephone equipment. So the radio and telephone equipment are included in the first $2,500 deductible, and then the, you know, any other personal property that's in there, whether it's an officer's equipment that he wears or, you know, anything like that, that he's carrying in a trunk or anything, would be covered with the second $2,500 deductible. But if we don't participate in that program, I can tell you that recently, there was damage to a vehicle. We contacted JPIA not knowing about this, and they said that the deductible would be $10,000. And because the vehicle wasn't a newer vehicle, it didn't make sense to do that to pay $10,000 or, you know, have to take that $10,000 deductible and get nothing really for the vehicle.
Right.
So this would cover us a lot more for really a small amount of money.
And, and one more question on the, I noticed on the earthquake and flood. Heaven knows, we, we're all aware of the fact that we live in earthquake country, but we also live in very close proximity to Diamond Valley Lake, and I know that there is a portion of the city that is in what they would call a dam failure flood plain. So does that put us into the special flood area definition, or?
Or flood, it would. I don't know.
I noticed on your slide, I think you had, there was, there was flood damage, or flood, and then there was special, special flood area?
Yeah, for a location situated wholly or partially within a special flood area. See, in the programs that I attached to the staff report, if it gives me that information.
I've attended a presentation by Metropolitan Water on that, and, and based on the engineering design and everything of Diamond Valley Lake, it is extremely unlikely that a catastrophic failure would result in that, but they do have maps with the inundation area that, that are depicted, and a lot of that comes into our city, city limit. So I think we just need to make sure, you know, what, how they categorize this for the flood.
Yes, and it, it does list major exclusions. Major exclusions are newly acquired or constructed buildings, personal property or unnamed premises unless values were declared and endorsed, asbestos pollution and contamination related to the aftermath of an earthquake, mold, mildew, fungus, bacteria, virus, and condensation, wet or dry rot, flood zones A and V, theft and terrorism. So we would need to determine whether that part of the city is in a floods, is in flood zone A or V. And I can follow up with?
Yeah, I think we just need, need to make sure, because I would, I would hate to have us present it one way, and then something unusual happens, and then we find out, oh, you're not covered because you should have been under this.
Right.
Just to get some clarification on that.
Okay, will do.
Thank you.
So Mayor, if I could add something. Councilmember Brown talked about the vehicles, police vehicles, and then Lorena touched on it too. One of the things that really bothers me is when I get word of accidents that could have been preventable. And so there's, you know, this shouldn't be viewed as the solution to lots of accidents. So there's a number of other management practices that we're currently rolling out when it comes to making sure that our vehicles are equipped with the right, you know, whether it's GPS information or information that can be relayed to our supervisors if there are movements in a vehicle that exceed the speed limit without, you know, lights and sirens. So those are the types of things that we're doing on the front side to help minimize the need for those types of things. But we do understand that there are those instances where there are accidents, but on the other side, we need to make sure that, on the staff side, we're doing what we can to make sure that we're avoiding the accidents that we can from a, a management perspective. And we're currently employing and beginning to roll out some of those as it stands now. We're also working with the JPIA and making sure that our employees are attending the right drivers' classes, defensive tactics classes when it comes to driving too. So the, the transition to the JPIA, although this is part of it, part of the other side of it is making sure that we're training and prepared for not having to utilize this when accidents do occur.
Okay, another question I have on the first category, Emergency Vehicles Program. That is for our fire engines. $10,000 per occurrence. So is there, what I don't see here is any type of comparison over the last few years of which would apply to, you know, if we were to have this. So would that even apply?
So I, I did reach out to our fleet supervisor because we do have, we use, I'm sorry, I forgot the name of it, but we do have a program to track all of the maintenance that's done on vehicles, but he says that we do not track vehicles that are total losses in an accident. So he, I know when he sent me the information months ago, he did have some information related to accidents that weren't total losses, and there were, you know, there were repairs anywhere from $2,000 to $5,000, transmission replacements or transmission repairs, things like that, but he does not track total losses.
If, I'm just saying, if a fire engine was in a collision, is $10,000 going to cover it? Because it doesn't even seem like it would come close.
Well, $10,000 is the deductible.
Okay, so that's our deductible.
Yeah. So the limit, I'll put it in here. Let me give you those.
And I mean, it also says on here, like, developing defects, like wear and tear.
Yeah, so we can't say, okay, this vehicle's 10 years old, it has 200,000 miles on it, it's really not usable anymore, rather than surplusing it, we're going to call JPIA and file a claim. We can't do that. This is for actual physical damage.
I'm just wondering, like, will we benefit from that one?
Give me one second.
I'm sure the repair part, if it is, covers repairs, that would probably be a good thing.
On, I know when it comes to fire apparatus, that any sort of accident or any sort of minor scuff on those things is going to cost it, in my view, at least $10,000 to just repair. And I would say that that's pretty minimal. I don't know, I remember that probably a couple of years ago, we had one of our fire apparatus involved in an accident. Wasn't our fault, but that repair was upwards, I want to say, you know, $50,000 or so.
I think, like, for sure, on the vehicle programs, they look really good, but we definitely do need to know, as far as, you're going to get back to us on the pumps and wells, the pumps at the wells, and then the flood zone coverage. I mean, I think that's going to determine what our answer will be, so I guess we'll have to just bring this back to the next meeting if we can get those answers. Okay?
Sure.
Do you know that, or you think?
Um, Mayor, I, I don't necessarily think we need to hold it up on that. I think we just need to make sure that we know how we're categorized, because regardless of how they categorize, it may have an impact on what our deductible is, but if we have no coverage on that, it would easily exceed what in a deductible. I think same rationale applies to what we're talking about with fire apparatus and police apparatus, that it would be impractical for us to try to recover from that without.
I'm just saying, like, one, if we're going to pay $179 a year for earthquake and flood, and if it doesn't cover what we need, then we don't need to pay it. If the pollution breakdown, I don't know if they're going to, like, reimburse us, because we at least do have our hazmat team that does that stuff, but.
Keep in mind, we have a $250,000 deductible on the pollution program.
Exactly. Right. But that is expensive, right? And we have something local that, those can be millions of dollars.
If it's something major, yes, it can far exceed $250,000.
So, but for sure, we need to find out on the earthquake and flood. And then mechanical breakdown, that's obviously cheap, but, but what do you think? I think some additional information would be valuable on this before making a decision, but I would turn this over to the city manager and to finance director and say, which ones of these do you think would be a cost benefit to the city?
So let me provide a couple of comments. I think the emergency vehicles, just because of the costs associated with that and how often they're out on the road, I think those make the most sense. When it comes to some of these other items, I think there is probably value in researching them, probably more, working with the JPIA and the backup that's included, you see that the All Risk coverage, obviously, all the member agencies are included there. And then as you start getting into some of these other programs, you notice that some of the member agencies that are a part of the JPIA don't participate in those others. So I think right off the bat, from my perspective, it makes sense to make sure that our emergency vehicles are covered. And then on a go forward, we can continue to evaluate, work with the JPIA and see whether these other ones make sense. I know that over the last year, the council's made a significant number of changes in just transitioning to the JPIA, which has been a huge benefit for the city. And I think it continues to, if we continue with that mindset of continuing to move in that direction, right off the bat, emergency vehicles, but I think we can continue evaluating, working with the JPIA to see what does make the most sense for us on a go forward. But right off the bat, emergency vehicles, my recommendation.
I would agree with that. Do you want to make a motion for the, just the first two? First two or just the first one? The emergency vehicles. The other vehicles are the police cars. I'm sorry.
Yeah, one of them includes the fire apparatus, and then the other vehicles includes the police vehicles, correct?
And public works vehicles.
Yes.
And you're saying both of, both of those are something we should go forward with right now and then further evaluate the other three?
That would be my recommendation at this point, yes. Lorena?
I agree. Those would be the ones I would focus on.
Okay. If, if there's, do you have comments?
No, I agree.
Okay. If, if no other comments by council or anybody else, I would make a motion to approve going forward with the emergency vehicles coverage and the other vehicles coverage, and come back with further information, breakdown on the rest of them before we approve that. All second that? All right, we have a motion and a second?
Motion by Councilmember Coupola, second by Mayor Meyer. Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Coupola?
Yes.
Councilmember Melonbaum?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes.
That motion passes 4 to 0 to accrue, or to direct staff for approved, looking for approved emergency vehicle coverage and public works vehicle coverage and other vehicles. And to provide direction to the city manager to bring back additional information on the other items listed on the staff report.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, council.
Right. Next item, 15C, Discussion and Action on City Council District 4 Vacancy.
Yes, before, again, I believe the city clerk had an announcement.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. Yes, before we kick off, I, the staff report to Stephen, I just wanted to make a quick announcement. It was late in the afternoon that I received a estimate from the registrar of voters from the county. So we do have a, an estimate for fiscal impact for participating in the consolidated election for November 2nd, 2021, which would be $33,000 to $38,000. This memo will be uploaded to the agenda backup and available for the public review as well. And I just wanted to make that note for the record. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I think, thank you, Mayor. I can handle the rest of the presentation going forward. I'm here to talk on the item which the majority of our crowd seems to be here for, which is item 15C, which is City Council Discussion Possible Action on the vacancy for the District 4 City Council Seat. Pursuant to Government Code Section 36512, the city council has two options in the face of this vacancy. Within 60 days of the vacancy, which occurred on May 30th, 2021, the city council must either call a special election to fill the seat. Whoever is elected in that special election will serve the remainder of the term into 2024. Or the city council may nominate and appoint a qualified individual to the District 4 City Council seat. That person, because the vacancy has occurred in the first half of the term, that person would be in the seat until the next general municipal election, which is in November of 2022. And then election would have to occur at that time, the same time as two other seats are currently up for election. And whoever wins in that election would serve the remainder of the term or two years until Little background on this, this seat was up for election on November 3rd, 2020. We had three individuals who were candidates for the seat. Joe Males received the highest number of votes. and the County of Riverside certified that election to the city council. On December 8, the city council determined Mr. Males was elected the winner. And an election contest was filed within 30 days by Kenneth Graff. The court held a trial on March 16 and decided, issued a decision in favor of Mr. Graff's contest on April 28, 2021. Judgment was entered by the court on May 20, 2021. And that judgment, annuling the election, went into effect 10 days later unless an appeal was made. No appeal was filed. So on May 30, the election was declared annulled and the seat was declared vacant. I did reference the Government Code Section 1770, which describes what happens when a competent tribunal, in this case, the Superior Court, declares a seat vacant. And so essentially, what we did was, we calculated 60 days from May 30, 2021, and that gives us July 29, 2021. That's the date by which the city council needs to either call a special election or it needs to appoint a qualified individual to the seat. I do have some additional information here regarding when you call the special election. So Government Code Section 36512 that we talked about requires that the election be at the next regularly scheduled election date. And there's several in the code that is not less than 114 days from the day the election is called by the city council. So if the city council calls the special election before July 11, July 11 is a Sunday, so we'll say before July 9, which is Friday. City council calls that special election by that date, then the special election will be held under Elections Code 1000, Section 1000 subdivision E, which is the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November. In this case, that would be November 2, 2021. If the city council decides to call the special election after that day, or if the city council takes no action and is forced to call the special election, then the special election, the date of the election will be April 12, 2022. That would be under Elections Code Section 1000 subdivision C, which has the second Tuesday in April of each even numbered year. At this time, it's unknown, and this is at the time of the staff report, it was unknown if the special election would be consolidated with other elections. Since that time, we have received word that Moreno Valley will be having a special election. It looks very likely that we'll have a statewide election on the question of whether to recall the governor and if so, to appoint his successor. But we don't have any certainty if that election is going to go forward by that date or not. It hasn't been called yet. If that recall election does go forward, it would likely lead to some cost savings to the city. Next, your other option besides calling a special election is to do an appointment. This city council and other city councils fill vacancies on their councils by appointment regularly. Typically, there is some kind of application process, interview process. I know one of our council members went through that process himself and was interviewed and appointed by the council. There's no requirement in state law or the city's code that you go through that process. You're perfectly capable of making a direct appointment of a certain individual. And I know that's something that's been advocated to the council. The only requirement would be those found in the municipal code and state law, which requires that the candidate be a resident of District 4 and under the municipal code that they be a registered voter of District 4. So you could take action, call in the special election. We have the resolutions prepared. So they are part of the backup. You could have a motion to call the special election, get it over with now. You could have a motion to appoint somebody. Or you could give alternative direction. So if you need additional information on any of these items, if you would like to discuss an appointment process, give staff direction on how to set that up, that could be done as well. If you do appoint somebody, they would take the seat immediately, be sworn in, and continue their on. That covers everything. I know that was a bit of a lengthy staff report. If anyone has any questions, I'm available to answer them. Have a mayor.
All right, council, do you have questions, comments, discussion? I do have a question. On the, you said, you were throwing out dates there, that council would have to call a special election by July 29. Or if it's to be on November 2, it would, the decision would have to be by July 11 or July 9, whatever.
That is correct.
Now, the question is, if we, as council, decide to go through the process of applications as we've used in the past, would that decision then have to be made before the July 9 date?
No. So if I'm following the question correctly, what you're asking is, do we have to appoint someone by July 9?
Well, that, but if there's not a decision by July 9,
Oh, okay.
We still would have to notify the registrar by July 9 that we go to a special election because the decision hasn't been made.
That is true. So the council could attempt to go through an appointment process. And if you pulled the ripcord, as it were, on July 9 and said, "We're unable to come to an agreement. We hereby call special election." If you call it by July 9, the law allows you to have that special election in November. There is one caveat to that, of course, which is, that is what the government code says. Our registrar of voters always has their own deadlines that they attempt to impose upon those who wish to use their services so that they can be adequately prepared for the election. And I hope that I've stalled long enough that the city clerk is ready to answer the question, that he knows it's coming, which is, what deadline would the registrar voters have given?
The last day to send an adopted resolution to the registrar is June 25.
So that's the deadline the registrar has given us to conduct our election?
Correct.
In November?
In November.
Okay, so the registrar would like a resolution from the city council. It looks like you would, if you were just looking at regular meetings, you would look at adopting it by your next regular meeting. It looks like we were very close. We can certainly talk to the registrar of voters. I've had many election issues where they give us a deadline because they want to get things going. But if it really came down to it, they could fudge it for another week or two. We can certainly talk to them about that. But it sounds like they would like it, a decision sooner rather than later.
We don't want to fudge dates because that's the whole reason we're here.
Quite right.
All right, can I add a comment?
Comment?
So I was kind of thinking about this. This is a very difficult... The pros to doing, to just, you know, I would say, appointing Mr. Males would be something like avoiding the cost of a special election, avoiding the political strife. Example, like, so in, we could say in November, for example, people trying to score points on various topics that, like, we once agreed upon, but then they kind of changed their mind and win votes or something like that. That's what I mean by political strife. To get someone in the seat sooner so that the portion, at least District 4, doesn't have to wait, you know, example, you know, who would the residents of District 4 contact during, while the seat is vacant? Who would they have to represent their voice in any, you know, complaints and things that they bring up if the seat remains vacant? A couple of cons, like, we really wouldn't, based on what just came in, we really wouldn't save too much because we're going to have to have, to elect as well. So we're going to have to go to an election anyway. So, and then another con would be, why should us four be responsible for electing a representative to represent District 4 if none of us live in District 4? If the, another one too is if the... I think if we're not able to agree on, you know, who to fill the seat with or how we're going to go about this, then it would just mean that it was just simply impossible. The judge, I don't, okay, so I'm trying to look at this from a very objective standpoint. So the judge had the law in front of him, this is what at least I'm envisioning. He has the law in front of him. And while the law is clear that, you know, Joe may not have established residency, may not have had established residency, knowing him, I don't see any malicious intent, like he was trying to, like he had some kind of agenda or something like that. I remember someone saying that he had personal reasons why he ran. I think that anybody who runs for office has personal, there's something personal, either in the city or the state, whatever they're running for, there's something personal that they would like to address, and that's the reason why they ran. So I don't really understand how someone could say someone had personal reasons. We all have personal reasons for why we make the decisions we make. Someone once said to me that you don't, you do not get to not choose the poison because if you... No matter what, you're going to have to make a choice, right? So it's best to at least choose the poison you're going to take. Does that make sense? How I see it is, the city established districts in, I think, 2016, and it appears to be fairly new as far as district names is concerned. And I think this resulted in the city's website not being updated. And essentially, you could say, the city did the same thing by not, you know, by not updating this. And so now the city isn't responsible, you know, you know, to make sure that people follow the law? That's not the city's job. And I don't think, you know, it's on the, I think it's just on the individual themselves to comply. Now, when it comes to Mr. Joe Males, it's, I think it's imperative to understand that if he's looking at a city website and he's putting his trust in city government and he reads, you know, you could, you know, as long as you're a resident. I mean, before, I think another mistake that I saw too was that before the districts were here, all you had to do was be a resident. You didn't even have to live in a specific area. So I think that's another reason why it was kind of overlooked because it just kind of fell through the cracks. And so you have this gentleman who's trying to, who wants to run for city council, and then he goes based on this website. And I would also add that, you know, it's not an excuse, but it's something like, you have a member of the community who's at least trying to fill the space of responsibility according to the Constitution and being a voice for his, for the district that he's running for. I think that he is a man, and I, I kind of feel out of place up here because everyone, no offense, is older than me. And I can't, sometimes I can't relate to some of the things that they, it's very difficult to relate to some of the things that they address and talk about. And I see him as a person who maybe grew up in a time where you went on handshakes or something like that, that you went off somebody's word, right? And it's like, today, you have to, now we have attorneys and we have all the, because you can't just go off a handshake because somebody could just steal the house from under you. You made a handshake, we're going to do this, deal. And then it's taken from you because you didn't have a contract. I don't, like, within my heart of hearts, as a mental health therapist, I use some of my background to almost interrogate him to see if there's any malicious intent about him running for city council. And none of my lie detectors, I didn't pick up anything, you know? And so, city attorney, is it the case that had he had waited a couple of days, this, we wouldn't even be having this discussion?
If he had established residency...
Before he pulled the papers?
Before he pulled the papers. Then the judge would likely have not gone the direction he did on that issue. There were other issues that the judge didn't rule on, but the residency issue, I think, was the most contested one. So, you know, I can't build a time machine and go back and change what happened, but I would say that if he had established the residency and then pulled the papers, yeah, we would not have had this issue.
So I don't, and that was one thing, so, okay. I agree with the judge's decision because it's the law, right? You have dates and stuff like that that you have to comply with. I agree with that. But when it comes to the spirit of the law, I think it's more the case that he had intentions, like, it's almost like, like, at least according to the psychological literature, that when a person's happy, they make the dumbest decisions. Because there's so many endorphins, there's dopamine, there's serotonin, there's so many things happening within a person's neurological makeup that causes a person's frontal lobe to be disenfranchised just for a moment. So I could see someone who was excited to do something about the city and like, take his place and what that looks like, and then rush out there like a happy person, you know what I mean? Not really thinking about, "I'm doing this too early, let me slow down," you know? Maybe that's the case, maybe that's not the case. Maybe I'm reading it too much because I'm a therapist. But at the same time, I see an individual who's honest and has a significant amount of integrity. And I think that counts for something, at least in America, that we live off of integrity and we live with, at least in the back, the backgrounds of our minds of the responsibility element, you know? We have an ability to respond to things in our lives. Now, one of the reasons why I ran for government is to kind of make a plan for the city that it can include, like, a maintenance process or something that, that measures the growth of the city, that makes sure that everyone in the city is getting what they need, their needs are met, it's clean, and we have things in process to make sure that as needs are met, as roads are constructed, as things are happening, that we continue with that process and we just build upon it. I didn't, I didn't, the years of me being here, I didn't really see that happening. And having a couple of discussions with Joe Males, I can see that his heart was like towards that, you know? So I didn't necessarily, like, support his candidacy because I didn't really know him at the time. But as I got to know him, I saw that he was a man of integrity and that he was a man that just wanted to do right and obviously made a mistake. And I don't think we should penalize him like we're all perfect or something like that. Does that make sense? Does that make sense? Um, a couple other things is, we have, um, ordinances, I don't know if you guys know this, but we have ordinances right now that if you're under the age of eighteen, you could be fined for hosting or teaching a dance class. In nineteen ninety-seven, there was an ordinance passed, so that people could play bingo here. Um, an ordinance on skateboard needing per, anybody riding skateboards needed permits on wherever they were skateboarding at. So, if we're gonna follow this law stuff, and, you know what I mean? Then we're gonna have to be going out here and giving citations to a bunch of people, you know, nobody's teaching dance classes at, under eighteen, but, you know, we, I see a lot of skateboarders out there. No camping ordinance? So, what are we gonna do, you know? So, federal law trumps that, but at the same time, there's a lot of stuff that we have to have updated in here, and I think that when we, when we, when we're looking at all these things, and we, we're updating what's happening, that, you know, something like, you know, some of you guys have said it was like a technical kind of thing, you could say that, but it was, it was the law, and the judge made a decision based on the law. But at the same time, I think we can, at least in this case, work with the, the spirit of the law. We have our sister city in Japan, Marimori, you know, from the Miyagi Prefecture in, in Japan, and if that, that name Miyagi sounds familiar, it's, uh, it's where Mr. Miyagi from The Karate Kid was from. And it comes from, you know, the karate that he was, he was, uh, involved in comes from a practice called Tenjo, which is a form of karate that emphasizes always moving and never stopping. And I think we should take a lesson from our sister city, at least our sister city's namesake, and we too should always keep moving and never stopping. And I think this council has been moving for at least the last seven months, at least that's what I hear from you guys, and what's been in my experience on here as a council person. And I think if we don't act or appoint tonight, we will become stagnant. I would like to make a motion to appoint Joe Males tonight.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? Uh, I'll second this for further discussion. I'd say first off, this isn't about Joe Males' dedication to the community, or to the American Legion, or his efforts to organize cleanups and such things. He does do a wonderful job. He goes out in the community, and he gathers support, and he does these things. This is about following the law. And go ahead. You know something? I didn't make a noise when you were all up there hounding me. So, give me the same satisfaction of you sitting there listening to me without your moans and groans and comments. This is America. I have as much right to speak and to speak my opinion as you do, and I've never once interrupted anybody at that podium, no matter how much I disagreed with them. This is America. I have the right to speak. And I heard that, thank you. This has to do with everybody following the same rules when we get elected. It is not a minor or a small technicality. Mr. Males obviously knew he had to move if he wanted to run in District Four. He made a mistake. He didn't get his paperwork done in time, and he didn't get his lease done in time. Therefore, the judge vacated the election. Now, I'm, like I said, I'm not going to condemn the man for making a mistake, but he didn't do his homework. It's that simple. He's no longer a council member. We also have had a process in the past, when we've had vacancies, of accepting applications, and talking to the applications, and making a decision of four council members. I've been a part of it twice before. The process works. If Mr. Males wants to apply, he's free to apply, he obviously has qualified at this point, because he does live in Seven Hills, and he is a registered voter of Seven Hills. So, I am in favor of going through the process. We've had many special meetings already this year, we can squeeze a few more in in the next two weeks, if the deadline to get to the registrar is June twenty-third. I am for a process, and I will vote for that process.
Well, it comes down to me, right? And, uh, I, I want to reiterate, uh, Linda's comment. All of us are bound by Resolution forty-five forty-five, which speaks to proper civil decorum at these meetings. And, uh, we all should be afforded the courtesy of no cat calls, no moans and groans, uh, when we offer our comments. And as Linda said, we all sat quietly while you offered your comments, some of which I agree with, some of which I didn't, some of which I believe were exaggerations or, uh, distortions of facts. You're all entitled to your opinions, but as we've heard the saying, you're not entitled to your own facts. And I have to, uh, also echo Linda's comments. This is not a personal issue about Joe Males. I know Joe Males. Joe Males and I worked collaboratively together to accomplish some things at the Post, and, and we're making progress at the Post. When all of this surfaced, I intentionally became conspicuous by my absence at all of the Post activities, and I did so intentionally, not because I don't like Joe Males or anything else, but I am a person who understands and respects law. I spent thirty years as a law enforcement officer. Rule of law matters to me. It's important that we follow the rule of law. And there's a law that I was concerned about, if I had been involved in anything at the Post activities, there was a very good likelihood that the subject of Joe's situation would come up, and Joe and I could conceivably converse about that. And if I had a conversation with another member on that same topic, knowing full well that it was gonna come to a council vote, that's a violation of the Myers-Millies-Brown Act. That's a law that can cost us monetarily, can cost the city monetarily, and I did not want to put Joe or myself in a situation where we might inadvertently commit a violation of the Brown Act. As I said, I am a supporter of the rule of law. And unfortunately, I think we've all witnessed what's been happening to our country over the last several decades, where laws don't seem to matter anymore. People seem to do whatever they want to do, when they want to do it, and how they want to do it, whether it's not stopping at stop signs, or speeding, or having violent protests that cause damage to personal property, and they, and they do that under the premise of freedom of speech, or a situation where people shoot off illegal fireworks and disturb other people's peace, and, and cause problems with people who have PSD, PTSD. Yeah, yeah, can't even say the word right. PTSD. And also totally inconsiderate of people who have pets and animals that are frightened by the fireworks. They show no regard for that. This council took action to try to address that. We enhanced the fines, and we even made it a violation to where, if you shoot off fireworks, and it's on your property, whether you're the one that did it or not, you're accountable for that. And we've had to take actions like that, because as a society, we've become way too complacent, and, and don't respect the rule of law anymore. And once you stop following the rule of law, that's the thing that separates a civilized society from anarchy. And once you start to blur the lines, it's just a matter of time before the line completely disappears. And that's not some, that's something that I want, I don't think it's something that any of us in this room would want to have happen. I do believe in following a process, and this, the city has a precedent that was set. I'm a result of past practice. There was a vacancy when Paul Raver resigned from the council, and the city went through a process. They solicited applications, there was a deadline set, and the applicants that met the deadline were interviewed right here in this room publicly, in an open council meeting. And the council went through a process to select somebody, and I was the person that ended up getting selected, and no, it was not a unanimous vote, but I was selected as a result of that process. And so, I think that based on past practice and precedent, I'm all in favor of following our past practice and precedent set by establishing a process. I'm not an advocate that we wait and, and have a special election in November. I think that that's far too long for District Four to be unrepresented, although that's a little bit of a misnomer, because when I, when I ran for council, and was duly elected, and not appointed anymore, I had to do so by district. And that's an artificial boundary that the city was forced to create, to establish these districts, that limited where we campaigned, and limited the people who could vote for us. But once we're elected to this council, it's my firm belief that each and every one of us, whether we came from District Five, One, Three, Four, doesn't matter, we are a representative of all of the citizens of this community, not just the district that we ran in. And I firmly believe that we have a responsibility to make decisions that are in the best interest of the vast majority of the people in this city, not just one district or another. So, on that premise, uh, I would advocate and support going through a process to solicit applications for appointment consideration, and we do so, uh, at the earliest possible
So that we are all factual, um, Joe Males didn't file his papers too late. He pulled his papers early. And if Joe Males, well, the city should be glad that Joe Males was not Carly Meyer, because if I followed what was posted on the website of the city for instruction, and did not have my attorney go over every move that I made, because somebody could be misleading, I would be suing the city. Because what he has done, what he has had to go through over the last seven months is inhumane. And what we are doing tonight, by not even considering the election that was already contested, and the voters still voted for him, is, it was already under lawsuit and publicized all over Facebook, everybody's, everybody already knew about it, and they, he still won. But if we decide to ignore the voters, I want to know, how are we encouraging the next guy that wants to run for office, that's not a professional politician, to trust, to trust the city, to trust the instructions that come from the city clerk's office? That's a big deal. And I, and I have one question that I want both of you, Linda and Russ, to answer for me. If you are Mr. and Mrs. Letter of the Law, I want you to tell me how you can justify a three-two vote when Bonnie Wright moved out of the state, because that was not an intent to live in the city. And, and how, I need you to be quiet. I, I want to know how you can justify that vote, because that would have changed the outcome of our measure-you balance, right now, tonight, today. And she was out of the state, and drove back and voted in a meeting that was a controversial vote, which would have failed if she did not do that. So, if you want to talk about intention, Joe was overzealous, and went and picked up a packet two days early. Bonnie left the state, she didn't move out of the city, and you had no problems with that. I want to know, what, what do you think about that?
Well, had I known that she left the state, all I knew was that she had stated that she was resigning from the council, and that she intended to move, but I didn't make any effort to delve into what, uh, transaction she had made, or whether she was still in her house in the process of escrow, I, I didn't do that.
So, on a sworn affidavit, the state of California notarized, she said that she did all these things. So, how are we gonna make that vote right? That was your yes vote, and your yes vote.
We'd have to go back and revisit it. And I think that post, question was posed to the city attorney at the time, and to my recollection, it was left unresolved.
Many things were left unresolved. All right, are there any more comments, questions? All right, can we have a roll call vote, because we have a motion second on the floor?
We have a motion to appoint Joe Males, uh, for District Four council member, motion made by Councilmember Luntall, seconded by Mayor Meyer. Councilmember Brown?
No.
Councilmember Crouppa?
No.
Councilmember Luntall?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes.
That motion fails, a tie vote, actually, two to two. Uh, that motion does not pass.
Do you have any more? Is there any other discussion, or any other motions on the-
I would like to make a motion that we, uh, attempt to fill the vacancy by soliciting applications, and setting a date for, uh, council to interview, uh, qualified applicants, and make a selection, uh, from those applicants to fill the seat.
And I would second that. Any discussion?
When, if, if, can they, um, can the applications be nameless? What do you mean, nameless? When they submit the application, obviously, they're gonna put their name on it, but when we get their applications to review it, that the names are covered?
Um, and, I don't support this at all, because I'm not going to put my place, I think, I'm not going to vote for the people, I mean, the people voted, and if we're not gonna go for the vote of the people, then I think we need to go to an election.
I'd like to ask the city attorney, uh, if he has a response to Malcolm's question about, if we, if I understand that you're, you're proposing that we would review the qualifications of each applicant without knowing their name, and, and render our decision on who we- of each applicant without knowing their name and, and render our decision on who we recommend on that basis?
Well, because, um, when it came to the Measure U committee, shots were fired when people started making claims that it was unfair, you know, um, whatever. And I think that we, as far as transparency is concerned, of how our council protocols we've designed is that we should take the names off and just read it for, for how it is and, and our votes based on that.
I think it's impossible. And the fact of the matter is Eric Gosh spent $15,000 running a campaign against me. That wasn't some secret that happened. So when his name is on something, of course, he's going to get the lowest vote from me. That's just goofy. No offense, but names mean things and people have reputations. And they have consequences for their actions.
So I'd like to know the city attorney if that's even feasible.
Uh, I mean, the council is capable of establishing the procedure that it wants to follow. So if the council wants to receive applications with the names blacked out for you to consider, I mean, you can do that. At some point, you're going to have to know who the people are because you're going to have to make a nomination and a motion to appoint that person. Uh, I, I do think just speaking generally, I, I think there's a practicality issue with it. Um, you know, we're going to have to have the address of the applicants on there because we're going to have to make sure that they're qualified and actually residents um, of the district. Uh, so unless we're going to black that information out too, so you guys don't know it, it would be difficult. Um, and generally speaking, the application questions, I wasn't able to find the tape of the, the last interview. Uh, but I think it generally asks you questions like how, you know, what have you done in the community? What are your ties to the community? Uh, my suspicion is that you know some of the people well enough that you'd be able to divine who they are based on their answers. So I think that you could establish a process that had a blind initial screening. Uh, Councilmember Lillianthall, I, I would say that there might be some practical issues in the way of actually making it occur the way you're sort of envisioning.
Malcolm, I think I, I understand the, what you're trying to get at and, and, and I, I in many ways don't disagree with, with your concept. But, uh, just, just to review the process that where I was first appointed, each applicant was interviewed right here. So we're going to know who we're talking to. Um, and, and we have an opportunity to ask them questions. We'll have their application. Uh, if they include a resume, we would know more about them. And in, at least in my experience, each candidate was asked the same battery of questions. So the council had the ability of hearing their answers. And, and by the way, all of the applicants were sequestered out of the room. And they were brought in one at a time. And once they were interviewed, they were able to sit in the audience. But no, no candidate had the benefit of hearing the questions before they were at that rostum over there, uh, being questioned.
I don't, I don't want us involved.
I'm, I'm sorry, you don't want?
I don't want us involved at all. I think we should do an election. That's not, that's not because of her. It's just because I, I promise you guys that when I got on this council, I, I don't have any kind of agenda. I don't have, but there were some comments made that based on the way I voted concerning people on Measure U, it was unfair. And so to take out that ambiguity or to, to keep that out, I don't think we should be involved in this. Yeah, I think I'd like to make a substitute, what'd you say?
A substitute motion?
Yeah, to, to go to an election. I mean, it's only, we got it low like 40 grand, better than 100.
I'll second your motion. Uh, and to, to clarify, would that substitute motion be to adopt the resolutions that are part of the backup calling for the special election?
Yeah.
Can I ask the city attorney a question?
Um, okay, you, you can't. Um, do you have any further discussion?
On the basis of my second to the substitute motion, uh, I'll withdraw my previous motion.
I'll withdraw the second to the previous motion. Can we have a roll call vote?
We have a motion by Councilmember Lillenthal, seconded by Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Krupa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lillenthal?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes.
That motion passes to approve staff recommendation number one, uh, to move forward with the special election.
Last thing we need to do is, like Malcolm said, is to stop moving. And so I think our council has done a lot this year and we've done it all together. And we may have a vacant seat for a while, but I don't think it's going to change the direction that we've all decided because we've had unanimous votes on that direction. So I don't, I just want to encourage all of you to keep moving forward the same way. Um, all right, item 15D, City Council Reorganization. Nomination of Office for Mayor Pro Tem to serve until December 14th.
I nominate Malcolm Lillenthal.
Second that. Can we have a roll call vote?
Motion made by Councilmember Lillenthal, seconded by Councilmember Krupa.
Um, Brown, no, yeah, sorry. First is by Brown and second by, behind me.
Motion by Councilmember Brown, seconded by Krupa, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Krupa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lillenthal?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes.
That motion passes to, uh, approve the nomination of Mayor Pro Tem as Malcolm Lillenthal.
All right, next we will, do you want to move? Do you need to move right now? Do you need to move right now? Okay. Um, oh, yes, Councilmember Brown, you have your first. We're on to our staff reports.
I did participate in, uh, WR cog executive board meeting on, uh, the seventh. And it was held by Zoom and primarily the, uh, items that were discussed in closed session was to, uh, consider the application for a new director of WR cog. And a selection was made, but since it was done in closed session, I'm not at liberty to share it until WR cog makes their, uh, formal press release. So I, I can't really share that at this, at this juncture. Uh, the Western Community Energy, uh, meeting is tomorrow afternoon. So at our next meeting, I'll be able to share information on, on what's happening with that. And I think that's, uh, that's all I have to report. Oh, I did, uh, I did listen in. The WR cog meeting, uh, overlapped with the beginning of the Infrastructure Commission meeting, but I was able to join them, them late. Uh, it looks like they, uh, they, they took on some, some good, uh, progress. And, and one of the things that was on their agenda was to review a, a proposed policy for naming city facilities after, uh, significant individuals. And, uh, I thought the staff report was really good and it was very inclusive of the process. Uh, and I didn't hear the discussion, but I found out afterwards that it's going to go back for some further, uh, clarification back to the city attorney. But it looks like it's moving forward. Um, the wheels of government grind exceedingly slow at times. But I think, uh, the net result is that we're going to have a good process in place that will allow us to, uh, recognize, uh, significant individuals, uh, when we consider naming, uh, city facilities and, and establish some perpetuity to their legacy. So I think it's, it's on the right track.
Councilmember Krupa?
Okay, um, the oversight, or the Investment Oversight Committee net, but I'll, you can, you can give that, uh, mayor. Uh, the library, um, I have to read this from the library director. The library's Tales and Tales Summer Reading Grab and Go Bags will be available beginning tomorrow morning. Patrons need to register and then sign up for a scheduling, scheduling time to pick up. And that website is the library's website and the scheduling instructions are on the Read Two, which is Read Squared, uh, link that is on the library's website. So that, that will start tomorrow, but sign up and, and then your kids can have all the privileges of a summer reading program. Uh, League of California Cities, we had our Policy Committee meetings this last Thursday and Friday. And I sit on the Revenue and Taxation Policy Committee, Policy Committee. And we had three hours of, uh, intense dialogue regarding, uh, the census and how monies are going to be distributed in California. We authorized, uh, Cal City staff to do kind of an independent assessment of populations based on the informal population census that gets done every couple of years so that cities get allocated the correct amount of money. Uh, but there's, there's big fear that the cities and counties will not get the allocations that are due them. So Cal Cities is going to step up and, and do that. Uh, I've also been appointed as the Revenue and Taxation Representative on the Cal Cities Annual Conference Resolutions Committee. And that conference is going to be in person in September in Sacramento. So we're making headway. Uh, SCAG is also going live, uh, in September. Uh, RCTC is tomorrow and, um, let's see, what else? Uh, RCA, um, still need to get that on my, my reporting list, uh, City Clerk. And RCA has, uh, been brought under the, in, under the umbrella of RCTC. And as such, uh, they've really gained a lot of lobbying strength because one is dealing with habitat preservation and the other is dealing with improved streets and roads. So, uh, there's an increased grant funding lobbying and, and also, uh, project, uh, lobbying. And that's about it. Thank you.
Councilmember Lillenthal? Nice. Councilmember Brown?
I did forget one thing. I, I want to thank the, uh, Police Department. I had the opportunity to experience their Use of Force Simulator, uh, last, uh, on the, on the 26th, actually. And, uh, I have to say, I'm really impressed. I, I've gone through that kind of stuff before in my professional career, but it was a couple of decades ago. And, and it used to be called Firearms Training Simulator. And I'm really impressed with the evolution that they're talking about Use of Force. Uh, because, uh, it emphasizes the other options besides deadly force. And it talks about, uh, de-escalating and using, uh, a number of de-escalation techniques. And you have the other alternatives of less lethal, such as pepper spray and the taser and even a baton before you resort to deadly force. Obviously, the, the matrix that you go through in a, in a real world situation, you don't have to go through each of those steps. If somebody's charging at you with a knife, you don't have to say, okay, please put the knife down and step away, you know? Uh, obviously you have to bypass some of those steps. But the, the orientation that was provided by the PD staff was great. Uh, the simulation, uh, even though it's a simulation, you get your adrenaline going. And, and afterwards, there's an opportunity to go back and critique the incident that you just handled, you know, in slow motion. And, and the, uh, participant is asked to, what did you see? Why did you do what you did? And so it causes you to have to think about it. So, uh, I really appreciate having that opportunity. So, uh, thanks to the PD staff for making that happen.
And join the next Citizens, um, Academy and you can do it too. Cause I did it during the Citizens Academy. I had, mine was scheduled for last month, couple of days after Russ and, and it got canceled because of actual PD training. Uh, so I got an email today asking me for dates in the next couple of weeks so that I could do it. And excellent, let's see how that works.
Yeah, I got blown up by a bomber.
I'm afraid I probably pull a trigger on everybody. Nice. Okay, let's see, um, on to, I don't have any more reports. We have the AdHoc Committee reports, um, council protocols. You guys are working on that?
Yeah, and, and we did, uh, add a, uh, another section to that uh, with a, a recommended, uh, procedure for vacancies, uh, which could be applied to council vacancies or commission vacancies. So, uh, that, uh, we met as the ad hoc and with input from the city attorney. So that, that document I think is, is ready to go whenever, uh, city manager can schedule a study session.
Excellent. All right, the Banking RFP, we're done with that one. Number two can be deleted?
Yeah, that can go off. That ad hoc committee is done.
Um, the Vision, Vision and Mission AdHoc Committee, um, we do have a meeting scheduled this Monday at 7:00 PM for our, um, budget. And I believe our strategic plan will be presented that night too, so that it's all coincides with each other. That will be upstairs at the library. So seven o'clock on Monday. Um, cleanup and graffiti ad hoc. Come on ad hoc with you? Does anybody want to be on that with, with Malcolm?
Actually, I will, um, only because I'm going in as president of our Rotary Club. And that's one of my pet projects for the next year.
Excellent. I'll write you in. Perfect. Um, our Homeless Outreach AdHoc Committee, we've been addressing issues. And thanks to our Police Department and the Rock team for addressing, um, several locations this weekend that were actually, um, illegal camping going on. So thank you to our PD. Um, our Business Outreach AdHoc Committee, we also need someone on that committee with Mr. Lillenthal, with our Mayor Pro Tem, Lillenthal. I don't know, if you want to do that, Russ, or I will, it's up to you.
Do it.
Okay.
You'll have me.
All right, uh, then we have our Investment RFP. So we had a meeting with our Investment RFP. Um, I think we were close to making a decision. Uh, do you want to ask the questions that you were going to ask? Because I'm just going to have staff bring that back next meeting for a vote. Going to ask some questions? I don't have those notes in front of me. Okay, I don't remember, but I can get them. If you just schedule meetings with them and get your questions answered. And then I just want to dissolve number seven and then distract staff to bring it back next meeting. And then the council will just decide because we need to get that. Okay, yeah, done.
So on, on that, is that a future agenda item that we would like to add to the list, mayor?
Um, no, no, this is just going to be, we already have everything done.
Okay.
And it just needs to be voted on for our investments because this is continued from our treasurer's reorganization.
Okay, so the committee's work is done.
Okay, so the committee's work is done? We're, yes?
Can I, can I? I mean, it's between two and so the council just needs to decide. I'll write up a staff report on it.
Did we want to interview those two before we bring it to council to make an actual recommendation?
Oh, okay.
So it's, just so I understand from the committee, it's okay to just bring back the item? Okay.
Yeah, there's two that were like same cost, so.
Okay.
Yeah. As the council decide. I'll get you those. All right, City Manager Lopez.
I have no updates tonight, Mayor, thank you.
And future agenda items. Do you want to add any anything? Got to get that budget done, I guess it's already on the future without being on there.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes.
I I had a question on future agenda item number two, this vagrancy and panhandling laws.
Yes.
Before I send that over to our prosecutor to look at your guys' ordinance and look for any updates that are needed. I know Councilmember Lillenthal referenced the camping ordinance, which probably needs a look in light of the city of Boise opinion. You guys were, you guys placed this on the agenda before I became interim city attorney. Is there anything in particular that was of interest to the council?
Um, you know, when we visit other cities, they actually have no panhandling signs and ordinances in place. We have nothing of the sort. And so our citizens that patronize stores will go shop out of town because they don't, they feel harassed outside.
Okay.
And, you know, someone's level of harassment to me versus, you know, to another person are different. So everybody's comfortable with certain things.
It's primarily aggressive panhandling in shopping centers, that that was the primarily impacted.
Some some cities have sit and lie laws, so they cannot sit and lie in a walkway. And so we don't, we don't have anything like that, so.
I was trying, what what are?
Those are just more, a bunch of different ideas.
Yeah, the issues of of being in the right of way on a sidewalk or blocking the sidewalk. And that had to do with sidewalk vendors also, that they couldn't block access to to the passage of on of pedestrians on a sidewalk. But I I think where the camping thing came in, it's more with the the Boise uh Supreme Court or whatever it was ruling that you cannot, there's certain things you cannot tell a homeless person that they can't do. Um, and I think that part of it was the camping in the parks. But if you would check all of that out and just get what our legal access can be to enforce the vagrancy and how.
The crux of the of the Boise opinion was if you're going to enforce anti-camping ordinances, then you have to have homeless services.
Right.
Right? Um, and so I'll I'll work on on that one. I'll look at the sidewalk and the aggressive panhandling at stores. I'll reach out to you, to you.
And and aggressive is relative, right? I mean.
Well, I'm going to.
Be approaching people, period. And when I used to be, um, when someone would panhandle and I had my children with me, they met a monster. So people shouldn't have to deal with that.
Yeah, so.
Not everybody is as passionate as I am.
That's a, that's a good point, including the minors. Uh, generally, the definition is going to be proximity related to specific uses. Um, but we'll absolutely look into that and I'll reach out to you, Mayor, Councilmember.
What I'm feeling is I I've met with several elderly folks who feel obligated to give money so that they, like, they're paying for their safety.
Because they're in fear.
Yes, and and that's that's unacceptable. Intimidation of anybody, panhandling is not, it's just not right.
And I and I think that, you know, we have a prohibition for aggressive, but that's kind of an ambiguous term. And I I think maybe we need to, if there's a legal way to tighten that up because um uh, as as pointed out, uh, an elderly person can be intimidated by somebody even approaching them, even if they're not aggressive, quote unquote. So uh, and I'm sure there's some case law that that's going to impact what we can and can't do, but.
It involves the International Association for the Krishna Consciousness, uh, which talks about soliciting donations being a First Amendment right. Uh, so we're going to have to balance that versus the uh specific issues that this community faces. Uh, but thank you for the feedback. Like I said, I'll reach out to you guys to get more of those specific examples you're having. Because the more we can define the ordinance very clearly for enforcement purposes, the easier it'll be to actually enforce it.
And then some of them, you know, they go jump in their gas dipped Toyota as soon as they're done, if you watch them.
Well, I'm familiar with the scam.
Yes. Right, well, that is awesome. You're right, if there are no further. Are you have more? Oh, okay. All right, with that, we will adjourn our meeting to the next regularly.
Well, yes.
Until Monday night.
I did, it's not a future agenda item. You you made a comment after our four oh vote to go for an election. And I think we, as a council, do agree on ninety-nine point nine percent of the things that come before us. And on that, the this, the priority sessions and discussions that we have had at the three work studies have been phenomenal because you can't have those types of discussions at a council meeting. So going forward on that and establishing uh a rapport and and coming to agreement and then bringing the people in and basically they they agreed with everything that we had all set out, which was which was really reaffirming in that we're all on the same page. And having this done and then being able to tie the budget to it and 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 Chris bringing it a program-based budget uh is is, I think, such a major change so that we actually know what the program or the services are costing. And you can then weigh a cost benefit on it. And I I just think, I haven't seen the total budget yet this year, but I I think I'm going to be impressed. And I'm looking forward to the presentation on Monday night. So thank you, thank you.
I totally agree with with her comments and I think we're going to see the the benefit of our study sessions come to fruition through the Monday night session.
Absolutely, yes. All right, thank you. With that, our meeting is adjourned.